Okie dokie. I guess I'll start. Oh, boy. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Planning Board's August 12th meeting, 2024. We're here at Town Hall. You can also find us on Zoom. And we'll start with the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Bear with me, it's my first time running a meeting. So, we're gonna get through it. Any public comments? Anything on Zoom?
I believe Richard is still disjoining.
Okay. Okay. Hi, Richard. Okay, so first off, we'll start with public hearings. So, our public hearings, both of them have to be continued tonight. 255 Sunny Hill, we don't have... Is it the correct people here to do 255 Sunny Hill? I believe so.
Yeah, if we had one more member, it's because I believe this was one of the ones that Glenn, you were specifically excluded from voting from because you weren't on the board when the matter started.
Okay. And then 3 Lane Castor Avenue for the special permit. We need four voting members here to approve or not approve that. So, both of those items have to be continued. And they'll be continued to our next meeting, which is August 26th.
So moved.
So moved for 1 and 2. Will that work?
It'd look to.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. So those two public hearings will be moved to August 26th. Next up, we have the decision on 240 Summer Street. Sorry, the two decisions on 240 Summer Street. One for the site plan approval and one for the stormwater permit. Richard, did you have anything on this?
Those need be deferred to the next meeting since Ms. Allison was not at the hearing.
Okay, you think we should move them as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Then I would look for a motion to move the decisions for the site plan approval and the stormwater permit for 240 Summer Street to our next meeting, August 26th.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That will be continued to August 26th. Okay, next up, we have the certificate of completion for 1325 Mass Ave. Just pulling up my file.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Greg Roy with Olson Roy. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. I didn't know, I didn't have a formal presentation this evening. But we did get review comments from Graves Engineering that seemed fairly innocuous. So we're just, I think, looking for your blessing on the ASBOL plan.
Okay. I'm gonna read through it real quick. I actually had a conversation about you a couple weeks ago.
Oh, was it?
My mom, it was, it was fine. My mom's buying in Shepley Hills in Grodding. And so they brought up your name, and I was like, I know him.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Small world.
Yeah, we got brought in there on the construction side of things. Not, we didn't do the designer permitting there.
Right.
That's a great developer.
Yes.
Larry is a good guy.
Yeah, we really liked working with them.
He's a good dude.
Okay. Any questions? Comments from the board?
I remember seeing that it was a foot higher. What was the reasoning for that?
I think it was a groundwater-related issue. Did you want to talk to that, Danny?
Hi, Dan Proctor, 1525 Mass Ave. On the owner of 1325. Yeah, it was basically groundwater. You know, obviously wet spring when we started. We were able to raise it a foot. Didn't really change anything as far as we did have leeway with, you know, slopes and what have you, that type of thing. So, yeah, that was basically it.
You're still under the 38 feet, I assume, right?
That's correct, yeah. And we're actually, because we went with a steel building in lieu of a wood construction, which was their first plan, our roof is less pitch on it, so it's lower than what was on the original plan, even with that foot raise. Yep.
Did we get any feedback from the buildings, Commissioner?
Specifically to 1325?
Is there any feedback required for sign-off of partial, like a phase?
I believe that this step is the one that precedes his feedback for signing off on the certificate of occupancy. So I, to my knowledge, there isn't anything from Brian that would need to feed into this decision here.
So the way he explained it to me was, the building permit was signed off, meaning all the electrical plumbing, you know, that type of thing. So then we come to you. Then, when each individual bay is sold to, you know, a plumber, electrician, whatever, then they still need to apply to get occupancy because it has to be approved for the use. So, comes to this board, you approve the site work, then the next step is that. So, that was the last time I spoke to you, Logan, and then I went to see Brian. That was how he explained it.
I see Richard's hand is up.
Yes. What Brian told me is that the bank won't lease any of the units to be sold or occupied until there's a certificate of completion on the stormwater for 1295 Mass Ave.
Okay. Okie dokie.
Didn't you finish the stormwater before you started construction?
I'll let my engineer talk about that. Yeah, the ASBOL, yeah. By and large, the major stormwater basin was completed, the one as you drive in on the left. When we, when Danny developed the building in the back, there were some swales and other pertinences that we needed to build. Those have now been all built. And even the ones for 1295 have been built. There's obviously a pad, the one acre site, that will have its own commercial building on it. Hasn't been constructed yet because we don't have a project there yet. But the stormwater for the entire site has been constructed. And that's all documented on the ASBOL plan.
Good, thank you. I can't think of anything else.
Okay.
In the construction complete list review, completeness review, it mentions like sedimentation and stuff. Is that something that will be taken care of, or do we have to?
I'm sorry, which one?
Number four.
Yeah, we had a couple of washout spots when the heavy rains came, and then the water district was doing their new water line, and they had to put in temporary, they had to flush the hydrant, and that washed out a spot. So, my guys have been basically patching washout spots as they happen, you know, with hay and what have you. So, and that's gonna be maintained forever anyhow because it has to be as part of the stormwater.
Okay.
So, we're not signing off on the stormwater until the end of construction, are we? Or are we doing that as well tonight? To Richard, I guess.
You're being asked to sign off stormwater for 1295 Mass Ave.
That's, and then the uncompleted building is a separate?
That's the phase one that's been done. And then, I think it's 1315, 1325.
Right.
Is set, phases two and three. Those would be a separate sign-off when that's finished.
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah. So, and really, the only thing that we would need to come back to is the final site stability, essentially. All of the infrastructure on the entire site, which includes 1315 and 1325, has been constructed. The basins and the pipes and all that stuff has been done. It's just, once the buildings are constructed and the pavements all, and the berms and things directing the stormwater flow, and the site has been stabilized with grass, that's when we'd have to come back for those two paths. But that is correct. We are asking for 1295 this evening, which is the large building that's been constructed in the back.
Now, I guess a technical question for Richard, since I don't think we did two separate stormwater permits, did we? We only did one for the whole site, didn't we?
Correct. You did one, but same as you've done with A&R lots, where they've had three or four lots done, and they did one stormwater permit. And you did certificate completion for one particular lot, one particular address, the same thing applied to this commercial operation as well.
So are we gonna ask you for a bond to make sure you finish your construction?
I hope not.
I think that's what we've done in previous circumstances like this. I hope not too, but.
In this, sorry.
It's the board rather not to do that. Given the review from Graves, in fact, I would limit it to 1295 only. I don't think you need a performance guarantee on the rest of it.
Just wanted to dot the i. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No?
Not for me.
Okay, so then, Richard, what kind of a vote are we needing on this?
A motion to issue a certificate of completion for 1295 Mass Ave regarding the stormwater improvements for that portion of the project.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
It does look a lot better than I expected it to.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is board discussions. So the first we have is the advisory board notification procedures.
If you need any paper documents for that, I have them here, but everything is also in the share file.
Okie dokie. You like papers.
I do, thank you.
This was essentially an addition after the whole right of first refusal process recently with 20 Kilburn Street and the Open Space Committee. I think Glenn might be able to speak a little bit more to this. You were at that meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, 7:31, yeah. And they were just somewhat frustrated with the kind of disconnect. I think that the right of first refusal is ultimately a process that like doesn't happen with the town that much, so there's kind of a lack of established procedure about handling it. And this board is one of the boards that's statutorily required to be notified, but advisory offshoot boards, such as the Open Space Committee, are not included within that. But as a matter of best practice, it's, they still want to be notified.
Yep, that sums it up. And that was, we had a conversation as well, Logan and I, in that it was clear when we took our vote on the Kilburn, that, you know, even sitting here, it was clear that, like, why are we voting on this, having not even heard from the Open Space Committee, you know? But we were under that, you know, at the time, my impression was we, you know, the selectmen were gonna vote that next night, so we, you know, had to vote. I realize now we could have, we could have punted, but. So that was, it was just clear. So I think everybody that witnessed what happened quickly figured out that the way we had done it was clearly, you know, meaning everyone, was not very efficient and didn't really follow logic. So I think it's, and again, with the conversation I had with Logan, and he understood, he figured it out, you know, and I just think it's important that as soon as we learn of something like this, we immediately notify Open Space. I mean, that's just the logical thing to do, because we'd be looking for their guidance, certainly, on these issues. And I do think, you know, I don't know much, I'm learning a lot about this Chapter 1 program, 61 program now, where, you know, I don't know how many pieces of property are actually even in town in chapter. And it certainly seems, you know, possible to have a database, you know, available to us of those pieces of property that are in chapter. We can kind of think about them before they even apply to come out, so that we're not blindsided.
I believe that information is accessible through GIS. Richard may know more.
Does Lundberg have a adopted open space recreation plan?
Yeah, and we updated it '21, I believe, and
In that case?
There is an image there.
There should be a, if it's done completely, there should be a table in the back of it on appendix that actually lists all the parcels under 61, 61A, 61B. Because under the state's requirements for open space recreation plans, those have to be inventoried. So there should be an appendix that has each of those parcels listed.
And I believe you can also go to Mass Mapper, I think also will give you that data layer, but I'm not sure.
You can also ask the assessor, and they should be able to spread out in a matter of minutes, a spreadsheet that lists all the parcels by 61, 61A, 61B. So you have each of the classifications.
So, not to harp on anybody that, because the situation just kind of sucks and everybody knows it, but just before Adam left, this was a discussion had at Open Space, and the discussion was kind of like, how can we streamline this? And the chair, at that time, almost a year ago, volunteered to have a joint meeting with the planning board on that. And Adam, I believe, was going to write that up in our policy or something, and I think it just fell through the cracks. So, we've already addressed this. And also, not blaming anybody, pointing any fingers, but I don't believe, aside from the fact that we did the A&R, and that should have been an indicator that they were planning on removing it, I don't believe that this board, the membership, was notified of the first right of refusal until we saw the agenda for that meeting. That was just before, we thought the select board was gonna vote on it. So, it's not just Open Space, it's also this board, and I don't know how long it's been on the radar for the select board either. And again, we're going through some growing pains, so no faults, but.
It should be the practice that as soon as the office receives notice of a request for that, that it be notified, that will be notified. Because the person, the entity requesting to lease the property from 61 or convert it has to send notice directly to the planning board, conservation, assessors, and select board. And typically do it by certified mail. So that, as soon as that gets in, that should be scanned and emailed out to the board.
That notification might ultimately have come back to me. Just looking through my notes, my first document related to 20 Kilburn was created on July 10th. But I had down at the very beginning of it that I was like unsure of what type of application it was, because it wasn't part of the sort of list I had been working with prior. And I had a call later on in the month, like the 17th, going over Chapter 61B and its relation to that. So I think that probably slipped through the cracks on my end at that stage.
No worries. And I appreciate you taking that, but it's been no secret that office has been empty practically since Adam left.
Yeah.
So, to be expected.
How do properties go into chapter? Do they have to go through a process?
So, the Chapter 61 is the MGL, it's Chapter 61 of the Mass General Law, 61, 61A, and 61B respectively for agriculture, forestry, and recreation. And you need to make an application. I'm not sure if you can do it solely at the assessor's office or not. Maybe Richard can?
Yes.
Just solely at the assessors?
Yes. The assessors, you submitted, assessors should be put in chapter.
So it's really just an application process? I guess what I was wondering is if there was any vetting of the property prior to it going in?
I've never known of a assessor vetting the property, because you're certifying, you're using it for that purpose.
Is it fair to say the town is essentially buying the first right, the option to have the first right of refusal through the tax?
No, what's, they are, the owner is not selling it to the town, owner is giving it to the town in exchange for a lesser assessment.
Right, so they pay significantly less taxes on that property? So I mean, that's part of what I was learning through this process with Kilburn, was that the town has actually, you know, financially vested into that property in terms of, you know, lost or surrendered tax revenue.
And it's, in some places, fair to comment for prospective developers to do that, because it reduces their holding cost. And all they have to do is then lease it out for recreation, forestry, or agriculture use.
Well, just to add some more information, there are some income requirements. Again, it's Mass General Law from 1800s probably, so it's, they're very, very small. But you aren't supposed to, if you've got agriculture, you're not supposed to let your fields go fallow, they're supposed to be cut. And I'll give you an example. My family farm is in Chapter 61 and 61A, and one year, somebody told the assessor's office that we didn't cut the hay that year, and the assessors was going to declassify us for that year. And, so.
I know, I know a person owns property in 61A, not in Lundberg, but this person would never farm property in their life, they wouldn't know how to do it. But what they do is they essentially lease it out to a farmer.
Yep.
Who comes in and takes hay off of it for the cows.
Yep, that's, the majority of people do that, in my understanding.
Okay. Any other thoughts? No? I will say that the first time I was on the board for a right of first refusal, we had almost the same issue, but I felt like that one was very rushed. You were here for that. And I felt like when they came to us with it, it was already at like 90 days or something. They've been waiting, and so we only had a certain amount of time before we could make a decision, or however that worked. And I felt like this was kind of along the same lines, and maybe we could have pushed it out, like Mr. McLeod said. So I think it's important to kind of focus in on what rights we have when it comes to this, and what processes we have.
I would just say that I think most cases, they are rushed, even though they don't have to be. Because you do have 90 or 120 days to act on the notice of conversion. And usually, people are simply trying to sell quickly, and so they'll try to get select board to put pressure on everybody to act on it quickly, as opposed to taking a longer time for analysis of it.
Okay.
Well, also, I think that the timeframe is fairly tight if there is interest, especially if there's no bona fide offer on the property. Because if there's no offer on the property and they want to withdraw it, then it has to get appraised, which it takes, is consuming. But even if it, even if there is an offer, just going through the motions of taking acquisition of the property is time-consuming, it's a lot of legwork. Brandon Hibby has been basically our all-star in that, on Open Space. He's my go-to person if I have questions, so.
And on that, just note that the timeframe is to act on the notice of conversion, that you are going to exercise your right. You then have a period of time after that to go through the town meeting process to get the funding to close on it. You can't drag it out forever, but you don't have to be able to buy it in that 120-day period. You have to be able to exercise, give notice that you're exercising your right, and then go through the appraisal process and acquisition. We did that here for a site that somebody was gonna sell, and it was supposed to be for school, and then didn't get used for school, because school department here decided they couldn't use it that way. That's another story.
Okay. Anything else on the advisory board notification procedures? No decisions we have to make on that, just, okay. So we can move on. Next up, we have a legal advisory for the Affordable Homes Act.
I suggest this be on the agenda for putting your radar, because it changes accessory drought unit provisions in state law. And Brian and I had a brief email exchange, he's looking into it. The town will need to make some amendments to its zoning bylaw regarding accessory drought units. Including, you can't require that a owner live in one. And there's a definition in state law for accessory drought units now as well. And it basically gives accessory drought units, I mean, the state definition, a exemption from zoning subject to reasonable regulation.
Subject to what, I'm sorry?
Reasonable regulations.
Thank you.
And we know the state, when they use reasonable regulation, they leave it very vague. But you can't require special permit, that is very clear. And what is reasonable is gonna be something that the town's gonna have to work with Brian Gingrich and the town council to come up with a framework that works.
Okay.
The reason, the reasons up in front of you now is because the amendments, as I understand administered, the accessory drought units in state law take effect early February of 2025. So you have some time, but not a lot of time for the state preemption takes effect.
I think it's fair to say this is a pretty significant change in zoning. Like the state's taking a lot of, a lot of local options away from the local communities with this, just several, several aspects of this. That has significant impact on people's property rights.
It, it, it does take away a lot of local option of what you, how you can regulate it and restrict it. And that's, it's the law, that takes effect in, effectively takes effect in February.
And it seems to go hand in hand with their MBTA Communities Act.
It's, it's the same effect they've done regarding solar, regarding agriculture uses, regarding education, religious uses. They've, there's uses over the years that the state has decided need to be given the permit to free rein, and they're applying the same approach to accessory drought units.
Okay. Thoughts, questions, comments?
Sounds like they're still working on how to explain it to us.
It's very true.
Yeah, that's, that's thing, the LSAH Act, and then they'll give to a state agency authority to enact regulations and rules and regulations, and then you wait three months to see what the rules and regulations is going to say.
Okey dokey. All right, if there's nothing else on that, then we can move forward. We have a line item in here for a budding community notices, which they're in our documents as well. If there's anything anybody wanted to discuss about them, something they read. If not, we can move forward.
And I'm just going to, there's something new to your agenda. I suggested to Logan that I think these should be listed on the agenda so that for the purpose of board members having an opportunity to ask about one or discuss one. Sometimes a community will propose something that's close to your town line, that may strike some interest.
Great, I think that's a great idea. No comments, though, okay. So we can move on to committee reports. So first off is Master Plan Steering Committee, that's Mr. Wilsmer, he's not here. I don't think anybody has anything for that. I know they haven't met, my husband is on, he's a member-at-large on that committee. They haven't met, they haven't been able to get quorum, so I think they mentioned sometime in October they were going to try to meet, but not a lot of movement on that. Next up is Open Space.
Covered that.
Covered that, okay, you're good. Municipal Building Design Committee?
We have not met in some time, but I did catch one of the select meetings, and there was discussion about it. So it's still being talked about.
Still alive. Okay, Agricultural Commission, we don't have a representative for that right now, correct? Because it was Mr. Allison and now.
I believe that's the case.
Okay, so we might have to add that to the next meeting to discuss if we want to have a representative there, and if so, then who?
For what it's worth, Matt Brenner's still going to be out for the next meeting, but he should be back after that.
So we can kick it to the September, the first September meeting?
Yeah, if that, if that works better for you.
Yeah, I think that'll be fine. Hopefully, we'll have everybody on the board at that meeting. Okay, Capital Planning Committee, I think is Mr. Brenner.
Think so.
Yep, he's not here. Economic Development Committee?
That's me. They have their meet and greet, Meet Lunenburg, again, this year, the second, the second annual at the Low Places Ranch on Goodrich Street, on the 26th, September 26th, at 5:30.
Okay. Perfect. Stormwater Task Force, also Mr. Wilsmer.
Believe so.
Yep, nobody, okay. Okay, Monticujuset Regional Planning Commission, that's me. We met last week, on Thursday. Lots of things happening, lots of talk about Nishoba Valley. MRPC is obviously starting to get involved, they were talking about how, I believe Senator Cronin wrote a letter. People have been writing letters, senators have been writing letters about keeping it open. I'm trying to think, there was a public hearing, that's what I wanted to say, a public hearing on this matter will be held at 6:00 PM on August 15th, which is this Thursday, I believe, by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health at the Devens Commerce Center. So if anybody is interested in going to that, again, that's August 15th at 6:00 PM at the Devens Commerce Center. The other thing we talked about was, Nishoba Valley was a big deal. We also talked about Devens, and I don't, I'm probably not going to explain this right, but Richard might understand this more than I, but Devens, as I mentioned before, is, it's public works, and it's school districts, they're, they're in Shirley Air and Harvard, that's right, Shirley Air and Harvard. And so they have a group of people, volunteers, that go to meetings, and they're the representatives of Devens. And I guess when they were writing the new law in the state for the Devens housing cap, they failed to include that group in voting members, or possibly members that were allowed to come to the meetings, which is kind of a big deal, because they basically alienated all the residents of the towns that need to be involved with the process. I'm probably not explaining that accurately. You know, I'm sure people can go online, again, senators writing letters, sending letters about how that's a mistake, but it's currently written into law now, and it does not include the Devens community in that process. Does that make sense, kind of?
Yeah, so my, I, so my understanding of Devens is, is it does, it does overlap those three communities. And my understanding is that it has everything but a mayor. And, and it's Devens Enterprise Commission, I think, which is a group that basically oversee that.
That's, yeah.
And so it will be in the deck that was excluded.
Correct, yes, they were excluded.
Is often viewed as a community, and it's not. It's not a municipality, it's a special district, so to speak, that overlaps multiple communities.
Correct. Yes, that's true. So that's pretty much it for the MRPC. Nishoba Valley and that were the two big hitters. Okay, and then Monticujuset Joint Transportation Committee, we have not met, we're meeting this week on Wednesday. That's it for committee reports. Now we have minutes approval.
Got a lot of reading for you guys today.
Okay, and we're good to approve minutes with three members, voting members, yep. It's fine. Okay.
How about, how about if, if Mr. McLeod wasn't, wasn't a member for those minutes? Is that the case for any of these?
No, the earliest dating of these would be the 12th. I don't know how member absences affects voting on minutes, but.
That is a judgment of the individual member, as long as they were a member of the board at the time.
Okay.
I've always stayed in position that if, if you weren't on the board, you, at the time, you couldn't vote on anything the board heard or occurred. That's always in my position.
Okay. So, anybody have any questions? We reading through them still, there's a bunch.
The Water District one is in there, so it's kind of long.
Okay.
So you had discussion on, I think it was three of these that required minor revisions at the last meeting?
Yeah. Let me look at. Because I believe what the case was, is that the revisions were there and were good, but there were two of them that couldn't be voted on due to the, like, quorum thing for that meeting. And one of them got put through.
Well, I've got a comment on the July 22nd public hearing.
Is that for 2:40 summer or 2:55 Sunny Hill?
Continued from seven, it, it doesn't say on the minutes. Maybe it does, and I'm just not seeing, oh, the hearing was to review stormwater permit for 2:55 Sunny Hill.
Let's see if I can move that information to the header so it's clearer at a glance.
Okay, well, no worries. You just misspelled one of the, one of the commenter's names, or didn't finish it.
Do you know which one?
Yeah, Ken, Ken, it's listed as Ken Pat, it's Ken Patton.
Ah. Okay, I probably didn't catch that at the microphone.
I don't know if there's one T or two, I would assume two, Patton.
Patton, I think so.
Sounds like a double T.
That was the July 22nd meeting?
Yes.
And that was for the public hearing, right?
That was for.
Okay. I just wanted to make it up.
For 2:55.
All right, that should be corrected now.
Wow, I don't, I don't remember ever seeing a table in minutes. You're outdoing yourself.
Thanks. I was trying to describe it verbally, and then I was like, this, this isn't going to work.
That's perfect.
Am I the only one still reading? I seldom read these anyway.
Don't say that. Yeah, no rush, but if, I'm ready for whenever anybody wants to make a motion. That Water District one is long.
It was a lot of fun, though.
Yeah, so I'm final, I guess.
I can read it off, if that's easier. I can read them off, yeah, okay. All right, so I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes for the planning boards. June 12th meeting, July 8th meeting, July 22nd meeting, as well as the public hearings for 2:55 Sunny Hill on July 8th and July 22nd, as amended with the Scrivener's error.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Lovely.
Congratulations, Logan.
We're moving, moving through the minutes. Okay, next up is our meeting schedule, we meet at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, August 26th is our next meeting, and then September 9th. Yes, Richard?
Did I hear Logan say that Mr. Brenner will not be at the August 26th meeting?
No, to my knowledge, he will not be, I can quickly double-check that, but I believe that he's going to be in surgery then.
Oh, so originally, when I discussed with him back in late June, early July, about the Water Spot Protection District, we had discussed having the board meeting on July 8th and August 26th discussing the Water Spot Protection District, when all five members could be present. If he's not going to be present, or all five members won't be present, you might wish to put that discussion off to September 9th.
Opinions, I think that's a great idea.
And my last meeting will be August 26th.
No.
Yes.
I don't think so, Mr. Wilsmer.
My, my, my work with the town ends August 31st.
Dang. Well, one more meeting to give us all the knowledge that you can.
And I will have the draft Water Spot Protection District amendments, to the extent they were discussed July 8th. That's been circulated to everybody so far, and, but if we can verify whether or not Mr. Brenner will be there, whether all members will be there August 26th, be a good idea.
Okay. Is that something we have to make a decision on tonight formally, or?
No, I think that's something that Logan needs to email out to all the members, all five, to request the confirmation that they will be present on August 26th before the agenda gets finalized.
Okay.
Heard.
Sounds good. All right, any public comment?
Not that I can see on Zoom?
Nope, okey dokey. Any board comments or concerns?
What happens after the 26th? Sorry.
We shut down.
No, mine, well, one thing is, before August 26th, if Mr. Allison could review the tape and record of the July 22nd hearing, that'd be helpful, as well as Mr. Brenner, if he's present, so that everybody can participate in the, everybody but Mr. McLeod, Glenn can participate, everybody but Glenn participate in the 2:55 Sunny Hill Road.
Okay.
Because Glenn, since he was on the board and began. Because Glenn, since he was on the board and began, can't participate. And my understanding from Brian Gingrich is that the town has worked out some work relationship with the Regional Planning Council, Plan Commission, to provide some staff support for the planning board after August.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm concerned. So there was discussion about the town manager screening committee and they are looking at going with a staffing company, I believe? And I mean, basically having MRPC provide us with a planner is kind of also the same idea. Is that the intention? I guess this isn't a question to anybody but the select board, but is it the intention to outsource our entire municipal employee?
Yes. My understanding, the RPC is on an interim basis while they continue to recruit a full-time staff member.
This is like a stopgap after a stopgap, is my understanding.
Gotcha.
And Richard, you've been a wonderful stopgap. Sorry to...
Yes, yes.
The best.
Do we know of any progress with hiring a full-time employee?
I have seen at least one interview conducted. I don't know what the full timeline of that is. Brian Gingrich might know more, but it's in, the ball is rolling on that. How fast, I'm not sure.
The ball has always been rolling, not always as fast as everybody expected or wanted.
Yeah.
And sometimes in backwards maybe, but...
Okay. Anything else? Good? Okay. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's it. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you on the 26th.
Thank you, Richard.
Thanks, Richard.
You're welcome.